Okay. I'll call the Planning Commission meeting to order on April 17th at 7:06 PM. And we'll start off with approval of minutes. If we have entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
For a minute, um, four, three, what was it? Three nineteen.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Watson, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Staley got his hand up for, sorry Jim. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so moving right along, we're going to the text amendment for the residential development threshold in CA zones.
Okay, so this is a text amendment application from the zoning commission to itself. Back in May of 2016, there was a text amendment done by a private applicant to lower the threshold for residence apartments from 10 to eight units. When that amendment was approved, there should have been another section that was amended as well that's related to the threshold, and that's in section 7.1.1.1. The proposed modification reduces the threshold from nine, nine residential units allowed, to seven before the section 5.3 kicks in. It essentially makes it, the original text amendment makes it more restrictive in order to try to construct or get approvals for residence apartments. This is just to make sure that there's consistency within the regulations from section five to this section seven. The, after evaluating it, the proposed text amendment is consistent with the plan of conservation in development for the following reasons. One ensures compatibility in the zoning land use and design on adjacent lands, streamlines development approval process to ensure that developments which are consistent with the town's development regulations are approved in an efficient prudent fashion. And third, to simplify the zoning code, zoning code to increase the usefulness and understandability. And I think that last one really sums it up so that all of our regulations are saying the same thing and not conflicting one another.
Okay, thanks. Sure. Any questions, Mr. Staley?
Uh, yes, um, the, oh, wait. The 5.31 and 7.11. The, uh, in, in, in May of 16, uh, 5.31 was changed to eight. Am I reading that wrong?
No, that's correct. So, the threshold now is, the maximum allowed is eight. Or, I'm sorry, as soon as someone proposes eight units or more, it is now subject to this bedroom equivalency. So now, in CA zones, you, you used to be allowed to build anywhere from three to nine because the threshold didn't kick in until 10. So now that the threshold has been lowered from 10 to eight, this new section needs to be one below that at seven.
Why does that need one below?
Because if it was one more, then it would be subject to the bedroom equivalency cap. And, uh, in order for someone to be able to build an apartment, let's say there's a, um, an apartment complex or a commercial strip on Barnum Avenue and someone wants to build residential units, currently permitted as of right, you're allowed to build anywhere from three to nine units above those. So, if someone came into my office and said, "I want to build nine," like your regulation says, according to the previously amended regulation, it would be subject to this bedroom cap. So we had to keep, we, that number in this section always needs to be one less than whatever the threshold is, otherwise they wouldn't, no one would be able to build an apartment above, uh, anywhere in a commercial zone.
Or eight, or another, uh, 5.31.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Uh, 5.31, the threshold is eight.
Yes, that's correct.
And the threshold is seven, 7.11.
That's correct.
And you're basing that on bedrooms?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Nope? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to send on to zoning, correct, with a favorable recommendation?
Okay, make a motion to send the residential development threshold text amendment to zoning with a favorable recommendation because it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, it streamlines the approval process and simplifies the zoning code.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Watson seconds, any further discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, the next text amendment regarding the automotive land uses in an LB zone.
Okay, so, we have a text amendment here from Kern Volkswagen Inc. The proposed text amendment is looking to do the following. One, create a new section 1.1.4, which establishes a definition for automotive uses, something that are, I'm sorry, automotive dealership, something that is not in the zoning regulations currently, so it will define that use. Second, it looks to create a special case criteria for automotive dealerships that the zoning commission would be evaluating in a potential project against. And third, it would look to establish the new parking calculation for such uses. For the most part, as you can see in my staff comments, I wasn't opposed to some of the changes that the applicant was, um, was making. The LB zone is currently our civic district, and it is also, as you know, falls within the transit oriented development district overlay, which looks to encourage activated uses, a higher standard of architecture, urban design. So, you know, I think that the business has been here for quite some time, over 30 years, I believe. So, you know, the first section, let's see, section 6.1.14, as I said, it discusses the criteria of section 20, which is a really important thing to have here. It allows the zoning commission to evaluate the project based on its harmony with the existing context of the neighborhood, so, and really gives the town the discretion when evaluating projects. So, it's good that they, they've included that in there. I had recommended that the following sentence be added at the end of 6.1.14 and have it called 6.1.14A, which basically says, "Vehicle storage inventory areas that are not located or not, that do not abut a primary business location shall be completely screened from all street views compliant with section 6.1.4. D," which is another recommendation that I have, assuming that the commission decides that they want to include this. I think it's important that we screen some of these uses that I would say are less pedestrian friendly, the more stimulating the environment we can create with higher architectural design, the more likely we're going to have people walking down our main street. I would say that the parking lot in, for the storage of inventory of motor vehicles would probably not be the most desirable of uses that we would want located in our downtown. However, if it's something that the zoning commission decides that they want to allow, there are some provisions that we can control, such as screening the lot. The next concern that I had was that if, if this text amendment was to be approved, that a new section for the criteria should be added, 6.1.14D, which basically says, "If located within a half mile of the train station, a real or a faux building facade, partial or whole artway or similar architectural component that is consistent with the surrounding historic and architectural character shall be added along all portions of the property that front on all streets to reduce gaps in the building facades and promote higher standard urban design." I don't think we have any of these in Stratford, but you're starting to see them more and more often to allow uses that are less than desirable to maintain, I mean, they're legal non-conforming uses. And essentially, I don't think anyone got these pictures, they should have received a, an example of, you can pass these along, of what a faux building facade looks to try to do. This is one that hides a vacant blighted lot. So in this instance, if they were to build a faux building facade, essentially where the car storage would be, you would have a facade that has, that fronts along the street, and then a third wall that goes for a portion into the lot that makes it look like an actual building, and then either an archway or doorway where cars can pull in and out. So you're essentially masking the less than desirable use and also having the applicant contribute to the public realm, especially in a, in a really high, highly important area, I think, for the town. Regarding the consistency with the project's plan of conservation and development, I mean, I have a lot listed here, but I think that even though there are some consistencies with the text amendment, I think it's generally inconsistent as submitted unless some of the recommendations that I, I've made, I feel have been adopted. I'll leave it up to you to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Mr. Watson?
Yeah, I, I have been reading it over again and again and again to see how we can make what I consider to be a heritage business in town be a functional part of the Todd, because I think that's kind of what we're presented with here. We're not, we don't ever want to say we don't want Kern here as one of our major businesses because we do want it here, but we also need to make sure that they are compatible with the Todd and what we're envisioning, not just for Main Street, but I also look at it from Barnum, because five years from now, when we complete the Barnum upgrade, as you're driving from Bridge, to Barnum, you're going to have a view, your first view of our downtown Todd is going to be that corner, so it's truly critical. And I think that's part of what any ask at the town has to be, how are you contributing with that? I also look at the existing parking that they have right now, and that's in the right way, my assumption is, is that the parking directly across from their showroom is in the parking, is in the current greenway, complete streets area, that they probably will lose that, or it'll have to be configured at, at some point, which means they do need to have more area parking, so I think that they're looking out for their own business in that sense. I think that we have to find a way to make sure that it's, it becomes an attractive addition to what Stratford is doing. I don't know, with, if this is, would be the best look for us, because some people could say it looks like more abandoned buildings, unless it was, do you know what I mean? But-
And that was just to show you how they're-
But I, I understand the concept, absolutely. And that's what I was thinking of. In complete streets, we talked about that intersection, how important it's going to be to end up with some kind of signage that, that is big and makes a big statement about Stratford and everything else. But I also look at what they're doing here, and they're asking us to allow them to go up within four feet of the property line. Well, I think they're already way into beyond the property line of what they're currently using, particularly on Barnum, on the Barnum side. So, I think that's one of the things that we have to ask them to make sure that they are fully in compliance with whatever they're designing, that they're in compliance with what our planning is for both Main Street and for Barnum. And maybe that's part of where we could come to a compromise between what we would love to see and what they need to have to operate fully. So, my opinion is that this needs to have more discussion. I also look at, at what you did for 1.1.4, 1.1.4, where, or what they did where they defined model of the future, it seems that they've written this particularly for themselves, and they say, particularly, particularly this 1.4, or the, the property line, property line, they're asking to join these properties as soon, but they own, they have non-contiguous lot across the street, which we have to ask them to stop doing this, or to find a way to make that compatible with, with what they're asking for keeps them from being, um, I don't know, but, but it keeps-
Complying?
It keeps them from being compliant, if they're saying here that they're talking about under 50 feet contiguous property, and then they have a lot across the street that they're storing all the new cars, that's indeed the opportunity for culminating, for culminating across there in an instance, if they wanted to continue to, that would signify something, you know, wooden structure across the, one way of improving the look on that intersection. So, I guess, without giving you any hard advice, my, my reaction to it is that I'd like to see them having, um, I've just been convincing to, 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 and we're planning to talk, and we're planning on, so that they're more compliant with that. And if we don't ask for that now, we could never get a chance at that intersection. We'll end up losing that intersection in terms of re-envisioning what is the real automotive structure, I think that's what I was saying.
Any other questions, or, Mr. Staley?
Yes, the, um, the zone LB, and what we want it to be, this doesn't really fit the character. And, the, um, this is the revitalization area, is it? So, you know, I've seen other towns where they have parking areas like away from where they are, sort of hidden or, you know, in areas that don't affect the, a revitalization area or main, you know, visual coming in to our town. The, um, they have two properties and they bought three others, obviously in, knowing what they wanted to do in the future, and they're not together, they're like here and there. I don't see the actual map of where the locations are, but they're obviously not one property, they didn't buy next to each other to create a property.
Maybe we should clarify that, um, they have this parking area, they have cars there across the street between People's Bank and the gas station.
Okay.
That's one piece of property. Then they have what's next to the Town Hall area. They've purchased the Star Restaurant area and the gas station. Or Brake Center, yeah, I think you're right, it's Brake Center. Have they also purchased the Yellow House back here?
It's one, it's 1100 Essex, it's the little red house, I think it used to be the little red schoolhouse?
No, that's-
It's a little red, it's a little red house.
Okay, but not the yellow, okay, there's a smaller, uh, building back there that you can see from the street, okay. So, actually, they are making it contiguous, correct?
They're making it contiguous except for the parking lot that's dedicated to only car storage. That's why they have inside their definition, not more than 130 feet from property line to property line. That allows them, that allows them to fit that parking lot into that, this definition.
Okay, does this, um, would this include, as you said, some way of fencing off how it, the view of it, where they have PVC white fencing?
They're not proposing that, I think what they've proposed is that it be screened, let's see here, the exact language, um-
Because, uh, to me, it just doesn't fit with our revitalization goal.
Actually, well, they didn't propose it, I, I'm sorry, they didn't propose it, I had suggested it be added at the end that says that any vehicle inventory storage lots, for example, the one that's they're currently utilizing now, would be, would require it to be completely screened from all street views. I, I mean, a fence is almost, is, almost takes away as much from your public realm-
Right.
-as a parking lot for the-
I think you said five feet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple of questions. Now, this is a text amendment that would affect the LB section of town, correct, right?
Yes.
Would it, is there any other LB section of town other than right around Town Hall? So this would not affect anywhere else?
No.
Okay. And would this affect any area of the TOD?
I'm not sure if I understand the question, it's, would it affect any other area? Well, there's, the TOD overlay does extend to other, into other zones that are not LB.
So, but this is only for the LB, this is not for the TOD?
Correct.
So it's not-
Exactly.
Gotcha. The other question, we could make some stipulations in here, correct?
Some recommendations to the zoning commission, correct?
Okay. If we look at, and I, I do like some of your additions, or both of your additions, I guess it's two of them. Could we also add that the, instead of no closer than four feet from any street line or adjacent lot, I think the TOD says 10 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Could we recommend that that remain at 10 feet?
That, and just to clarify, that what is not any closer than 10, or four feet or, or 10 feet, parking? Or?
This is outside storage and display of vehicles shall be restricted to areas no closer than four feet from any street line or adjacent lot line. And I'm just asking if we could make it 10 feet, which would be consistent with the TOD, and would put more buffer area between these parked cars and the street, which if down the road we needed that for the greenway or complete streets, that area could be used? Is that, am I understanding or saying that right?
I think so, I'm, I, I understand what you're saying, but I just want to make sure that everyone is, is clear that regardless of where they're set back, and I, and I agree that a farther setback is probably for the good. That doesn't necessarily mean that the greenway is going to be afforded that additional space if the town is able to work something out, and, and this commission has required them to set that back, at least leaves the door open for that. So I wouldn't be against that.
Okay. As far as the, the screening, it, um, I think we, if I'm hearing correctly, we agree that we want some screening between the cars and the public, you know, where, where the walkway is or where, where people will look. I'm wondering if we could change the wording a little bit to say screening that fits the, you actually said it later, the historic and architectural character of the area. One of the, um, thoughts would be, especially like across the street, maybe because we have all brick buildings in the area, you know, from the Town Hall to the police to the People's Bank, maybe that could be a brick type fencing, which would be more architecturally and, you know, in line with what we have up and down this part of the, of Main Street. Possibly down Barnum Avenue, maybe that could also be a, a brick fencing that is more architecturally aesthetically pleasing, shall we say? Is that something that would make sa- I, I, you know, I like what you've added, so I think we should adopt that.
Yeah, I think, keep in mind that the fence wouldn't allow it to be any taller than a four feet. In the first 25 feet, there's the, the fence regulation, which encompasses walls, puts a cap at four feet for the first 25 feet of the property on the frontage, so it would limit the height and potentially the effectiveness, but vegetative screening is not subject to the fence regulation. So, they are allowed to go a bit, I mean, they're allowed to go much taller, I mean, you could plant eight-foot arborvitae's along the, the frontage, and, you know, that would be a bit taller. But I think that even a combination-
Yeah.
-could be nice too, so.
Well, can we somehow word that into, into what you're recommending as far as the vehicle storage? Maybe either architecturally, uh, matching screen?
At which point would you have that, the vehicle storage inventory areas, where would you have that line cut off and kind of start the revised version that you're thinking about?
I'm, actually, just, shall be completely screened-
Okay.
-from all street views with architectural, historic or architecture, architectural character of the surrounding area.
Okay, should, should, should views.
And then you could put in, and compliant with section 6.1.
Okay, screened from street view, from street view, and compliant with section 6.4, 6.1.14D, period. The screening shall be, and the screening shall be, what was it, consistent with the surrounding historic and architectural character?
Sounds good.
All right, hang on, let me just jot this down.
Okay.
Dot, dot, dot.
Okay, Mr. Staley?
Uh, yes, uh, I don't know why I would revise something, we're really not sure we want.
Okay.
So, um, you know, that's a hair reactor, some part of that hair going on by the management, should be right where it happened, and it should be a beautiful hair of Stratford. We're trying to promote a hospital and medical thing, something, um, brings people there, restaurants, whatever.
Yeah.
But the parking park is a pit.
Yeah. And I think as Mr. Watson said, we agree, but it is, it's, it has been there for 40 years-
Yeah.
-as a car location. The Star Restaurant has been a, a difficult location to keep a restaurant there, and the parking is not the best. The brake place was a gas station, I'm, I guess it's a matter of balancing it with the needs of economic development, but also making it more pleasing to the general public when they walk by, drive by, or bike by. The other concern would be that zoning could accept this, because we only make recommendations without any of these, um, recommendations. And none of this, it could just be a parking lot that you see. From my perspective, I think it's a matter of just trying to, um- kind of work with the company, you know, with what their needs are, which might help the Barnum area, you know, as far as Star Restaurant and the break lining place. It helps the, the company, but maybe we can make some recommendations. Now, if zoning decides they don't want that to be there at all, then our recommendations don't matter, you know, it, that's up to them. I, I think we're just trying to hedge our bets with the zoning commission that if they are going to approve this, please at least take some of the things that Mr. Hibansky has, has recommended and some of the things that we've said. I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that car dealership is going anywhere. So it's kind of like trying to balance it from my perspective. Mr. Watson?
Can I kind of make a comment between, between the two of you? That's partly why I was raising some of the questions I had, because I think we have to plan so that we don't foreclose choices for us in the future. Without saying to, to a hardworking business family, because I believe it's run, owned by a family, we don't want you here. But we need to make sure that while they are running a business, if they run a business forever, it's okay, but we need to make sure that, that the vision that we have for ourselves still can be accomplished after the fact. As, as a planner, that's what I'm most concerned about, that we don't foreclose those things for us. And I think there's a whole list of things that we can come up with. The fact that they have gravel in the lot, in their current park, I would say give them kudos for that. Say, we don't want you to pave it, because that makes another acre of permeable pavement that, that will help, help us with our watershed numbers. So there's, I think there's a lot of things we can do to make it better for them. I think the last item here was the transportation. Improved streetscapes designed and designated in the vision plan to transform them into multimodal greenway leakages. We could add in the TOD. I mean, we could say this area falls within the TOD. I think that plant, zoning should be very aware of that, that, that is one of the major things that's not written in here. We're not talking about something that's, you know, on the edge of Bridgeport. We're talking about something that's right in the center of our TOD. So we have to have a voice, and we have to hope that, that zoning will consider this in a serious nature also.
Yes, because we just recommend, so we could, I guess, send on a, a no recommendation or not recommending it, if, if that's what we choose to, to do. But it is, then that's basically it, you know? And so we're trying to find that balance where we're saying, well, if you're going to say yes, at least make sure these things happen. If you're going to say no to it, that's fine, the zoning commission can make that determination, correct? But if you, you, the zoning commission, agree to this text amendment, please consider these recommendations when you do it. And I think that might be a stronger position than just saying either no recommendation or a negative recommendation. At least, that's where I'm coming from. But your point is very well taken, as far as-
A learning curve.
No, but your point is very well taken. I'm sorry, Jay.
And just to echo what the chair said, it is, it's not uncommon for a planning commission to give neither a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, but some points to consider. So that is always an option as well. It's just the, how the board recommend, if you give a unfavorable recommendation, the text amendment is no longer approved by majority. An unfavorable recommendation requires a supermajority for the text amendment to be approved. So that's what the ramification would be on how the letter is written, how you folks decide to recommend.
I talked to Dave about it, and he's making a list. Any other comments? Yeah, Jim, Mr. Vigliotti.
So if, so, so there's like a Barnum Avenue rehabilitation plan, or, and I'm not really sure what the title is, but that doesn't supersede what business or, or an individual wants to do with that, whatever frontage they have on Barnum Avenue? I, I, see, I'm, I'm just a little unclear, like, so in other words, if we, if we develop these ideas and we pass these, you know, put these plans into place, like Complete Streets or the Greenway or something, developers have the right to come in and say, yeah, I, I see you, you know, whatever. I'm not going, I'm going to ignore that, or I'm not going to comply with it?
Yeah, if, if what's being applied for is on private property and what's in the plan is regarding public right-of-ways, those are two different things. You know, a town plan can make recommendations to folks for what type of uses that they want to see, but the plans are not, you know, they're not binding to the, to the private world. At least the private property.
So, so if there was a plan, you know, if the, you know, if there was a Barnum Avenue, a Barnum Avenue corridor plan that said these types of uses are what are encouraged, and these types of uses are discouraged, you know, an existing business, which is legal, and although it may not conform to the zone, it's legal, they don't have to pack up their bags and leave. They're, they're able to stay, and they're able to expand as long as they're, they had, there are the provisions in the zoning regulations that allow them to do that. And, you know, this, that's kind of where we're at right now. They, they need some new provisions in order for them to be able to expand. So if the commission feels, and as Commissioner Vigliotti mentioned, you know, if, you know, there's a Barnum Avenue corridor plan and you do feel that there, there's inconsistencies, you know, this is your, this is yours, and the commission's opportunity to say, hey, this isn't consistent, and, and we decide to do X in, in reaction to that.
From item curve to where these parked cars is about fourteen. And the current redevelopment farm stops a block the opposite side.
The current redevelopment stops about a block before we get to their property line. So if, this is a question, I guess, really I'd have to ask our planner. Are we essentially keeping their grandfathering alive if we were to say yes to this? Or are we making them illegal? It has no impact one way or the other?
No, their business, nothing, but this would impact the expansion of their business, which they've already done, and they've done it without, without-
Right.
-approvals.
Right.
So if you say yes to it, it basically would, if you say yes to it, it would legitimize what their expansion in, in terms of, I keep getting ahead of myself. The zoning commission is the one who says yes or no. If the zoning commission says yes to these changes and whatever modifications that you recommend, if they decide to include those, then they would be allowed to expand. But it wouldn't affect the business as it sits, as approved. I know that's confusing, because they've expanded, but as, as approved, yes or no to what happened to this application would change. I think it would put a damper on some of their planned expansions.
Yes. Which might give us a lot of land for rebuilding it.
So what, Mr. Staley, I'm sorry.
So we're at a point of, and I use your remarks, um, it's better to give something with something to the zone than to just not give, just an unfavorable notion. Is that what I heard?
That's what I heard.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, I think that's right. But I do have a question. If we gave an unfavorable recommendation, but added that if you do go forward, we would like these changes, can we do that?
Yes.
How does that sound?
A conditional unfavorable.
A conditional unfavorable, there you go.
As submitted, you would give an unfavorable recommendation unless one, two, three, four are incorporated into the text.
And may we take your text here and just insert it?
Well, you'd have to make a motion, Mr. Watson.
The whole thing? No, 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 I'm talking about this. That's because that's what we discussed.
So this is all the papers that these-
Right. I can try.
First of all, do you want to make it unfavorable or unfavorable?
I want them to incorporate these five things into their request. So I would have to say unfavorable, unless they can find a way to incorporate these into, into the project as proposed. And I do want to list these items. So is there a number, anything on this? Is this simply a text amendment? Are we doing, we have to do this, plus this, right?
Yeah, well, is the other page, the bottom of page one.
The bottom of page one.
Are they using the other three properties right now?
That's the problem is, it's all.
Okay. Mr. Watson, if we can make a recommendation-
Could you please?
We can send this to the zoning commission with an unfavorable recommendation, unless the comments made by the planning and zoning administrator are incorporated into the amendment. As well as the amendment to the planning and zoning administrators-
The text, the text amendment, okay.
-that we discussed earlier regarding the screening-
Being historic.
Being historic, yeah, having, you've got that?
Be consistent with the surrounding historic and architectural character of the neighborhood.
And there'll be no further development? Are purchases of property to increase the business again?
I don't know if there's anything more they could purchase, to be honest with you. But to answer your question, yeah, they could.
Yeah, okay.
If, if we're going to do this, we could also add in the lot, that they not pave that lot, they keep it in gravel or stone.
We could add that, as a, we could also add-
We need to change that four foot.
Yeah, we, that's true. We also wanted to change the amendment from four feet to 10 feet per the TOD.
For the setback.
Setback, yeah.
For the setbacks of the display vehicles.
And the screening, that would also mean the lot across the street?
Correct.
That would all be included? Is there anything else that we'd like to add as far as stipulations and recommendations?
I think what we also need to do is get a determination of what they're going to do with the existing buildings in the new lots they purchased. Are those going to come down?
Yeah, that's, that's not part of this application. They're just looking, what we're trying to discuss here is just the, just their, their proposed text amendment, unless, unless there's something that you think should be added regarding the buildings.
So right now, I think what we're saying is, although we're saying we don't recommend it, what we want to do if you do go forward, that the screening around the property, wherever the property is, be historic and architecturally in character with the surrounding area. That it be 10 feet from the property line. And I, and I think that's it.
And, and then maybe sensitive to be, or, or aware of that Barnum Avenue development and, and the Greenway.
To be consistent with the Barnum Avenue restoration, development or restoration plan.
The TOD, the downtown TOD and the Greenway, or the complete streets.
So it would be the TOD, the Greenway, and complete streets. Can we add all that?
So that, you know, it's, it's, their, their, their expansion, you know, sort of is, you know, in compliance with the character of the town that we're trying to create, you know? Just because they're private property, they're not going to, you know? We're going to have to start over at the drawing board all over again. I'm just trying to think of how to incorporate those things into this text.
Could we incorporate it into your area?
I mean, because it's just based on geography, it's just based on where they are, that they happen to, they're, they're writing on bullseye of everything that we're trying to develop. I think that, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but we could potentially recommend to the zoning commission that they be, that they be cognizant of the, the standards for the TOD as well as the potential expansion of the Greenway-
Yeah, yeah.
-in front of, you know, by these progress.
Yeah. I think, I think you hit it on the head, on the nail, the nail on the head. So do we now need to make a?
So, in summary, it's, this is the short, in section 6.1.14A, change from four feet to 10 feet. The last sentence of section 6.1.14A shall say, from street, continuing from street views, the screening shall be consistent with the surrounding historic and architectural character in the surrounding neighborhood. Number three, the lot shall be, is recommended that if they're any gravel. And number four, the zoning commission be cognizant of the TOD standards and complete streets initiatives that are currently underway.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously, unanimously. Thank you very much. I think we're all agreeing with you for a time. Hopefully, we just. Okay, we'll be right along, we're going to the text amendment regarding the C and C.
Okay, so there's bottom of this one, and, you know, I'll discuss all the text amendments and zoning changes one year. Essentially, what they're trying to, applicant's trying to add to the C and C zones are some uses. The restaurant food service use, hotel use, and some other incidental uses such as marine base and residential. All their proposed uses will be subject to a special case approval by the zoning commission, which is a place to save for a community group development that's not impactful, harmonious with the existing character. Let's see. The use reduction of the setback from 16 to 15 was a concern. Has that's consistent within C and C zones currently? Minimum side yard, let's see, proposed to be 16 feet because of the nation, because of previous texts that draw up no concerns, the elimination of that 16 foot. I'm sorry, the proposal of that 16 foot side yard. They produce the minimum rear yard from 15 to 32, which is hopefully in response to comments that I give preliminarily about really utilizing the waterfront for public access here. Let's see, one concern that I did have was the reduction in the, or I'm sorry, the increase in the minimum, sorry, the allowable impermeable space from 70% to 80%, and the reduction of the open space to 20%. That conflicts with the county's MS4 storm art event. Goals to help to, the goals which are to reduce impervious services, increase open space throughout town. I think that there are maybe some creative ways that the, either the applicant or the new recommendation, the planning commission, the zoning commission could maybe keep the impermeable space requirements as they are and maybe create some new ways for them to get open space. Also, one recommendation that I had was that all buildings be constructed as close to the street as possible. And that they can park them out of, you can go in the street. Stuff tells us just what we were just talking about, we want to see nice new buildings as the home car or tractor, the back ends of cars and license plates as we try to buy. Let's see, what else can I add here? They talk about eliminating the 50-foot distance between buildings. This allows them, I assume that this is to allow the buildings, multiple buildings to be constructed closer to the street, which would provide a better aesthetic design. The roof lines, I don't have the change in the roof lines, I don't have the issues that. Eliminating provisioned accessory buildings, I think it's a good idea. It produces large, anonymous, big box buildings. You know, I think Stratford divisions a more village type character, smaller buildings, multiple buildings on site to create a more village experience for shop owners and patrons. They have, applicant has eliminated section 7.8 altogether. It didn't, and now I have some. I was been unsure about the entire elimination of 7.8. And I felt that eliminating it was okay given the fact that there would be no longer a conceptual, you know, this regulation was designed for one shop. And I think that what the applicant wants to do is they want to design something, but don't have it look exactly the way that the one in the 90s was built. They want to be able to have a whole new design character. Which the existing facility, there are writers of things, you know, I don't think it's a leak, but I think that an updated or a different design approach will be terrible either. But I asked that the zoning commission, they want to inquire exactly the reason why they had that higher section eliminated. Particularly section 7.02, 7.03. And then the last amendments they made were the section 15.8, which designate what type of liquor uses are permitted in what types of zones. I have no issues with the types of liquor permits that they're proposing to be allowed in C and C zones. Hotel beer, hotel permanent tavern, club, bowling establishments, restaurants, restaurant beers line for re-adoption. I think that for most part, overall uses that welcome. The. One thing that I would really like to see in the regulations is that, you know, any, any site that's to be developed that, that has waterfront on the property should be required to dedicate a continuous portion of that waterfront land to public access. A walkway, nature path, freeway, the, 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 the freeway, you know, right, you know, parallel to the site would not be out of the question to have a judgment back behind this property to take advantage of, to be more. Text amendment is consistent in many different ways. We'll go through every single one of them. On to the proposed zone change. Future land use plan and land conservation development has classified these involved properties as commercial. Commercial is defined as future land use plan, commercial land use is designated.
Is designated for specialized commercial uses to take advantage of their location along the waterfront or proximity to the employment centers. Restaurants, hotels, boating facilities are appropriate uses. I think that's part of the reason why I felt there were so many consistencies with what the applicant, in terms of uses, what the applicant was proposing for the C and C zones. And it, and its consistency with the future land use plan. The future land use plan also shows that there's a portion of these properties be dedicated to open space. Although it shows it kind of running through the middle of these properties, I would. Right. So I would recommend that if open space is designated, that could be, that could be located along the waterfront and there could be a restoration project or something to, you know, replace any displaced wetlands if they're present. Yeah, the, the proposed text change is consistent in almost, in, in almost every way, given the knowledge that we have of the project to date. The applicant has only submitted a text amendment and a zone change. We have not seen any formal development plans as of yet. So some of the items in the plan of conservation of development, like environmental considerations, open space and recreation, waterfront, some of those things are just, they're unknown currently. We don't know what the final plan is. Which is a part of the reason why I thought that it was an important thing to add in that, that waterfront, waterfront area and open space be designated on any property that's, that's to be developed in this zone. That's all set, yep, thanks.
Mr. Staley.
Again, if the, I want this property and I didn't know how bad it was. The, the house is shooting together without that.
Mm-hmm.
And you're a couple of houses that people are living in it, which I would assume are leased. It's the owner of Rikers, I'm a Riker, he's tall. The, I would like to see, I'm, I'm going to see a little bit, and change. But, you know, I kind of have a hard time, we don't know what it's gonna be there. And that's, that's my.
They certainly have listed quite a few things, from bowling alleys to hotels to. I, my personal, well, I like bowling alleys, that's interesting. Mr. Watson.
I have been reading over this the last three days, it's been making me nuts. My first question is, if we were to accept this and change the, the C and C, because I assume that's what this is, we would change the C and C zoning, correct?
Well, part of it's C and C.
And all of these new, new uses would not just be here, but it might be in any other one. Future Holly Lane C and C, a Success Village C and C. I mean, we essentially are radically changing the way the way we would have development in every commercial shopping area, or whatever the proper term of the C and C is. That's the thing I found most frightening, trying to make an immediate decision on this, because the repercussions on that, on, forget this piece probably, across the town would be dramatic. We're, would radically be changing the way we approach. We'd have 21st century strip malls of a different kind and we don't know yet, because everything is an assurance, that I read in this. All, we'll, we'll, don't worry about environmental regulations, because we assure you that as built will be perfect. I just, I kept finding some of these, some of these statements that lead me, believe that someone hasn't spent enough time yet actually figuring out what they want to build here. That's my first comment, I'll leave it at that.
I just want to respond, this is the only C and C district in Stratford.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that it couldn't be created anywhere else, but if it was to be created somewhere else, I think the commission and whoever's adopting that would, should understand what they're allowing if these, these uses are added.
Did I see some public land in that area?
I thought I read that as well, yeah.
I'm not sure what happened to that access.
Where did you see public land?
On the map.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to look up. I found green on the map that says, blue that says public land, but I couldn't actually identify it.
It's hard to identify.
So I don't know if we're up here. No, this is all, this is the wrong one. We're still, you have to go back in the back when it says recreation or parks and rec or one of those.
He's got the PMCD.
There's two. Here's Booth Memorial, so it would be right up here.
Here.
What page are you, what page are you looking at?
Pink and purple.
That's pink is limited.
Pull it out.
That can't be. Retail, that, that would make sense.
Mr. Watson, Mr. Staley, what page are you looking at?
We are on page.
So we can all look.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, thank you.
But, see here, if you look at land. This is just zone, that's, that's what I'm saying, if you look right here on this one, this is Parks and Rec. There is land right here. But this, I think, is where the property is. This is Booth Park. Yeah, so this is probably it right here.
Okay, probably 93.
I did print a, I printed, printed a Google overhead map. See, here's the wetlands around here. And there's another set of wetlands down in here, somewhere in here.
I do know it's mentioned in the land use study that was done July 2007 for the potential expansion of the commercial district. And I'm pretty sure it did mention that there is some town property there.
Well, that's just a concern moving forward, incorporating it somehow, just to give off the Greenway.
Help yourself. While you're.
Wesley Street.
I don't know.
Shingle Street.
Well, that, while you got it out, this area that he's talking about goes all the way to the water, all, the whole area.
Over here, and then it stops right here. That's where that, that paper street stops.
So this is what all we're talking, we're not talking about this area?
That's the area, this is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties out here.
So we're talking about seven properties.
Can you point that out again? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 properties, total.
Make that 12.
Is this the line they're talking about then? So they, they're not including condos?
No. This, this dark line is what delineates where the zone change would be happening. So it would be incorporating the, the public street, which is typical, I mean, you know, Barnum Avenue is CA, just because, you know, you don't stop the zones in the middle of the street.
Would we lose the, the street?
All we're doing is the zone change, so I, we don't know. I, I can't imagine.
They'd have to come back and.
I can't imagine, I mean, they'd have to, the town would have to abandon it or sell it to them, which, I mean, it's certainly possible. I'm not sure that they would do that in the, in the sense that it would really handcuff the, well, it would make it quite difficult for the town to sit, to, to get waterfront access, because now there would be no longer this public street.
Mm-hmm, unless they went down Charlotte.
That's true, unless they extend Charlotte, you're right. Or create something back along down, at more, closer down the end of 110 over here.
Well, Charlotte has a, it's been designed, when they, we did the Parkway entrance, to have a turn coming from.
It has a light and a turn.
And they could take a left-hand turn, right-hand turn is easy. So it's, as far as traffic, my concern about the Parkway entrance and everything, it's sort of already been taken care of with that left-hand turn going into that section. But we don't know, that'll be up to zoning to figure all that out? But we don't know, that'll be up to zoning to figure all that out?
Yes.
Traffic.
When they would come, if, you know, if the applicant, let's say these got approved and the applicant, if they decided they wanted to come back with a development application, it would be on the zoning commission to then determine traffic concerns, signaling off of 90, uh, I'm sorry, off of the Mayor Parkway. That would definitely be a part of that.
So, I'm okay with this, with the caveat for the public land. You know, but if there is any public land there, what's gonna happen to it?
You want to protect, yeah, the public land.
It's hard to see from these maps.
What would CNC stand for? Commu-, uh, commercial neighborhood zone. You'd think it would be CNC, right?
Yeah, you would think. Any other questions, concerns? Recommendations? Sure.
Um, I, I was looking at the, just so you know, post text amendments that were put on there. The one that has an underline and white.
Mm-hmm.
I felt okay with minimum yard length. I think we're running once again into 65, a little bit of a difference. Which we, I guess we can argue forever. We're saying it's a pay bill for the 500 million in that area. I think our coastal, I feel the name of the term, our wetland discharge program, is that the correct term?
And the MS4 Stormwater Program.
I don't think that we should be allowing anything to change in our impervious surfaces. Anything we should be saying, whether people move those surfaces. With no impervious surface, we don't have. Well, they will become, if they put in, if they put a copper lattice in here, put in a hotel or additional thing, we need. We gotta, we gotta say to people that, you know, you need to do fine gravel drainage in parking, hall parking areas, paved roadways that are, that are traffic, speed traffic. That's the long way if you really want to start doing environmental sound work. If we're gonna allow them to start thinking about rebuilding this whole giant site, which it is a big site, that is a big site for Stratford, we really ought to start thinking about, about how the future of sustainability and everything else, because in reading through DPE reports on Housatonic, that area of the Robin Lane is where there is all plenty of pollution and the outlets in that area. So I don't know if it's the green lawns in that area or the restaurants in that area, but if there is something that's adding pollution in that specific area, then we shouldn't be concerned about it. So this will be pushing these kind of projects for its good ways for us to start creating pilot projects that actually will have real impact. And I don't think developers care. They would just as easily put in the gravel, Cape Codish parking lot as they would put it in other, other things. We did actually improve our entire water layout. So that's my comment on that. Are you on 7.73? They totally cut that? But it would certainly be if we're gonna be doing this in other places in town, then we might not, we might not want. They took out 7.73, I forget their favorite. Was this the tunnel? It is, Chris, it's totally. It's been renumbered in the Green. Oh, okay, there's my, then, who's my? The elimination of 7.73, someone else that it's placing. Oh, I see, okay. Um, what else is here? Why, this, I believe, is the water pipeline, um, so, first of all, why did they cut this up, what are any components that we need to cover?
Yeah, I mentioned the same thing in my staff comments. I was unclear as to exactly why they did that and I prompted the zoning commission to question him on that. Because I don't know the intent for doing that other than, um, let's see, 7, 7, 8 basically says that the development should be uniform. So the property to the north, where 88 Ryder's Lane is now, there's a shopping, there's a retail plaza there. If we, if it kept 7.8, it would need to be designed in the exact same way that that one was designed.
Architecturally?
Nope, in terms of, yes, architecturally, site layout, building, building siding. You know, they say the buildings can't be anywhere, any clo- let's see, uh, distance.
There is no impermeability there.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, uh, there's a real estate company in there. That probably looks like a block on Atlantic City.
It, it's... My initial just take on 7, 8, as I was reviewing it, seemed that this section is explicitly for the current development that's there on the CNC zone. And by keeping it would require any future development of the CNC zone to the south, which we're reviewing currently, to be designed in such fashion, which the property owners don't want to do. Correct.
But if we were to do it in any other place in town, we can't say the same thing to the campus.
Does it stop at Charlotte Street or does it go? There's two houses on the south side.
Sorry, oh, sorry. This is the last. As the property, this is north, this is south. This last parcel, the parcel furthest to the south of the proposed zone change, eventually pinches down to nothing. There's nothing down here other, other than marshland as it goes down past here.
But it does include these two houses?
Yes. It does.
Because those look like they're not in bad shape. But to answer your question, it would take out all the RS1 section.
And there's not much there, condemned house, right?
No, and, well, on the south side of Charlotte, there are two houses that look like they were in really good sha-
Put it down.
Yeah, before the pinch, as you put it. There's, well, there's definitely one house closest to Main Street that seems to be in pretty good shape. There's a house set back behind it. That seemed to be okay. All the other houses, well, there was one, 111 Oran Oak Lane. That was in pretty decent shape.
Uh, that was the one down below.
Right. And then the one across on Oran Oak Lane looked like it was inhabited, but...
Right, I saw cars on both of them.
Right, but some, the other building, uh, house in, that's really on Main Street, that did not look inhabited or inhabitable. And there was one building on Charlotte, I think it was Charlotte, that did not look habitable. But there were two houses, other houses that look in pretty decent shape.
Are these, are these houses all, um, okay with, did they sell it already? Or is it anything else?
Yeah, the applicant has the owner's, all property owner authorizations.
Okay, so then, if you did phone them, okay.
Yep, in order to make the application, we had to have a authorization letter from all owners.
Okay, so it's part of a little island of some, uh...
As far as a residential area, yeah, there's one, two, three, four, five, about six houses. I think they're all on an acre probably. So to Mr. Watson's question, there would be no RS1.
I'm just thinking, it's applicable to the, because we are establishing what a CNC zone is.
Mm-hmm.
But we're rewriting the rules for what we allow a CNC zone. So anybody coming in who wants to do this anywhere else is gonna be following these rules. Which will include, because in other areas, they will have to fix next to it.
Possibly, yeah. But they'd have to go through a whole zoning change?
A significant one. Which is why I would think it would be somewhat unlikely for that to happen. They would be, an applicant would be more likely to modify an existing zone to fit their needs as opposed to change it to a CNC, which might be quite cumbersome given the length of the language that's in there currently, even before any of these changes.
I believe you, is that 85 and 2000, they were implementing the changes? And now with our, our new vision for Stratford, we're seeing that, well, let's do this, you know, which we don't know what it is, but it's not that area that it is.
And we're sure that that whole area is bought by this Ryder's? We're not sure.
Every person that's, that was advertised on the, let's see, it should be on the top of my staff comments. Those are all the property owners.
I don't think I got your staff.
So Ryder's Partners LLC, 64, 6540 Main Street LLC. It's basically all the properties that they're in question. They're named, the LLC is named in, after those properties, except Martin Spriglio, Michael Rosnick, John Piccolo. So those are all the owners and, um... One more, and your question was, Madam Chair, do they own all these properties? All the owners are a part of this application currently.
Because it would seem it would make sense not to have, like, two houses kind of dangling out there in an RS section, but, and it seems like they've, they're taking care of that. Again, we can make stipulations and changes to the text amendment and then send it on to zoning as we did on the other one. So Mr. Watson, if you wanted to change the impervious area back to 70% from 80%, as Mr. Vavansky recommended, we could do that. And the minimum open space back to 30% from 20%. Those are two adjustments.
And you require that there be public access.
And the requirement for public, yeah, as Mr. Vavansky said. 20% to 30%.
And if the other, if it is, our different three-point paths had a great way coming across from, to, to, to Main Street, but it also has a container, uh, River Road. They're not engineering and everything else. Both of them are taking through, through this piece of property almost all the way. So whether it goes along the roadway or whether it goes towards Housatonic, Housatonic, I think there should be some sort of permission that great way be accommodated across property points as it's south and east to west.
Can we put that?
I thought that's what the first one was, to dedicate continuous land across the property for whatever I said in my dedicate continuous land across the property's waterfront.
That we never got your comments.
I'm sorry.
That's why you're reading it and I'm like, I'm looking for it.
I'll spare, I'll spare excuses. I'm sorry about that. You should have these.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, one of my, one of my last comments was that the applicant be required, I'll read it word for word here. Lastly, as the lone CNC zone is located along the bank of the Housatonic River, the commission may choose to have the applicant to add in some language that requires any developments which are situated along any waterfront in a CNC zone be required to dedicate continuous land along the property's waterfront for public access via walking pass, fishing piers, et cetera.
It's hard to shoot.
But just, is there some other comments you made that we might want to include?
There are, and I was just waiting for everyone to finish because I didn't know that everyone didn't have that. I apologize. One of the, one recommendation I think that might be important to consider is that the buildings, new buildings be constructed as close to the street as possible with no parking in between the buildings and street so that visitors to our sa- town coming off of Mayor Parkway are seeing nice new buildings and not a parking lot.
And I have a question, because you had said 15 feet. You put minimum front yard 15 feet. I assumed it would be that.
I said the minimum, I recommended that the minimum front setback, front yard be zero. They build right up to their property lines.
So in, in this case, it's a state road, so it's 15 feet, three already?
And it might be more than that, actually.
Now, how does that go with number, letter A? It says the first half of the minimum required front yard shall consist of non-impervious surfaces and landscape trees. Is that within that 15?
Let me see here, which section were they proposing?
It's 7.7.1A.
First half of the minimum required. Right, would, well, I'm actually recommending that this would be, this would take over in, in place of that. So the building, correct.
Okay, so we're actually removing A.
Exactly, section 7.7.1 point A.
Just clear on that. All the recommendations are from property line A, not the Eastman.
Correct, only on the private property.
But, let me ask one more time that same question. Because I ended up with seven feet. If you, minimum, half of the minimum required front yard shall consist of non-impervious surfaces, flower beds, shrubs, whatever. So you are saying zero, correct? So, there will be no flower beds. Unless they want them.
Unless they want them, correct.
So theoretically, we could have buildings right up along River Road with, assuming that there was no state setback, right up next to the road. Period, right? Because you also said provisions shall also be made for sidewalks, driveways necessary for operation.
Well, that's what the applicant is saying.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah.
I, so I just...
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. So, it wouldn't be built, and just to be clear, and I want to make sure I'm understanding you, it wouldn't be built right up to the road. Like, there's a minimum of seven to ten feet. No, well, there's a minimum of, there's three-foot planting strip, five-foot sidewalk, and in general, on the other side of the sidewalk, there's usually one to two feet. So that's about ten feet from the road is technically, is usually where property lines start. They're, they're all over the place, but.
I'm just looking to the future where we're saying five, three, five-foot sidewalk doesn't work anymore. That we need to have an eight to a ten-foot sidewalk.
True.
I just want to make sure that we're accommodating in that, in that amount of space. We're not allowing, so, because we're, and those junctures right there are critical. If we don't get that passenger walking, riding area, if we don't make sure we preserve that in some way, then all of the merit, Greenway that's going to go across, that's going to come down and come through there, that's going to be a major route of walkers and riders at some point in the future, based on the fact that the merit ends at Sikorski.
And that's a part of the reason why I suggested a zero, a zero setback, because the building will be up to the property line. The property owner is more likely to do some sort of paver, some sort of surface, so that if, if and when the town ends up doing its Greenway project up past, north past Sikorski, and it comes through here, we're putting in an eight-foot path.
Right.
That abuts up to probably any other seven, maybe five feet of paver. So now you're talking about maybe a ten to fifteen-foot wide boulevard area for this, for this area.
Great.
That's the hope, that's the hope. I mean, we don't know what the development's going to look like, but.
Okay.
Well, do we have to put that into this amendment?
If you want it, yeah.
Well, if we want to have it done.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not, and that's not just us even, the state has that on their, on their future plans. The DOT is, I mean, everybody's agreed that whether it's just the matter of going down River Road, whether we can afford to build the, the space on the side of the road, whether the trail goes straight down River Road into, into Main Street, or whether it has to go up through Booth into Main Street.
So, but that wouldn't go in the minimum front yard? That would be a separate stipulation that there be, how many feet total? Eight feet of?
Well, it's ten feet if you really are doing a legit.
Ten feet of a pathway.
Which can be the right-of-way. I mean, we could put that in there. If, if right-of-way exists, it can be in the right-of-way, but you must accommodate this through the property, either the front of the property, or, I, I mean, I'd prefer a river route, but, or both.
Or both.
Yeah.
I mean, you could create a great loop in there if you're going to have three hundred condos.
And I know you don't have my comments, but my comments is hopefully setting up the prop. My comments are geared so that the property is hopefully set up for both. The continuous waterway access, as well as the zero, zero setback. I, I would be okay even if the, the maximum setback was five feet. And it's recommended that it be at zero, but if they wanted to do five feet, because they want to do something else, a planting strip or something, you know, that wouldn't be the.
My assumption is that this actually is a smart development. It's kind of a 21st century Orinok, in the sense that they're trying to combine what, it's an uber complete streets, but it essentially combines living, eating, recreating, all in one, in one small development. And if that's the case, then I think we should do these asks. We should make them think about these things. But I'll go with whatever you put in your writings to make it easier.
Well, I think that, I think that my, my comments reflect, I think, exactly what you want. I, I, that's, that was my intent in writing them anyways.
Well, being we don't have your comments, let me ask you.
Sure.
It says here, the impervious theory went from eighty percent back down to seventy percent, and the open space from twenty percent to thirty percent.
From thirty percent.
Twenty percent to thirty percent, the open space.
Correct.
Back to thirty percent.
Correct.
The applicant has to dedicate the end along the border from for public access, correct?
Correct.
And buildings be as close to the street as possible, recommended front setback be right up to the property line.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Now, do we want to add, or did you add, to accommodate the Greenway into the plan? You said something about that.
Well, I believe Commissioner Watson was, the idea for the setback was to hopefully accommodate for the future expansion of the Greenway in that, in that area.
Yeah.
So, zero front, new buildings shall be constructed as close to the front property line as possible. A zero setback maximum is recommended. And no parking be allowed between the buildings and the street in order to better accommodate future Greenway's expansion.
Is that okay? We're getting there. What about the height of the building? Or potential height of a building? They're proposing sixty-five.
Which is a five-story building, correct?
Well, I, according to what I saw, it's six. Would I recommend probably ten feet per story?
And that varies, you know, depending on size. But if we're talking about a hotel, you know, you're, we're not talking about fifteen, you know, nice high vaulted ceilings like we're sitting in now. You know, they're seven, seven point nine foot ceilings. So, you know, I think that a part of what somewhat protects the context of the neighborhood is the inclusion of the decision criteria for special cases. They, they say that anything that is proposed in these zones requires a special case and is subject to the special, special case criteria. And I'll just tell you what those are. I don't, I don't want to memorize, but it's essentially to preserve the, projects should be consistent and harmonious with the existing neighborhood. So if, you know, a seventy-foot proposed hotel is deemed not to be consistent, then the zoning commission certainly has it within, within their right to say no if they don't feel it meets the context.
Do we have a fifty-five foot now?
For a CNC zone, I think it's forty feet right now. They have it right here. Hang on one sec, let me check. Thirty feet, right. It's currently thirty feet. They're proposing sixty-five feet for uses that they've added. And existing, I'm sorry. It says seven, six, two D. The, the only uses, just before we get to that, so I don't forget. The only uses that would be permitted to go taller than forty feet is the hotel, which would include a meeting room, catering, banquet facility. The, and the incidental service establishment, a bar, health spa, or health spa. So it's really only the hotel that they want to be able to go to that height. Everything else would be subject to the forty-foot maximum.
But I think it's just, I think we should insist on is that none of this can be used.
Or block the view from booth park. Although, booth is farther down. It shouldn't.
Shouldn't?
Yeah. It shouldn't. It's what?
It's across from the entrance to the park.
Correct. Yeah, so booth is actually further down. It's more salient. So I think that part would be okay.
You could include all view sheds, you know? It can be built to sixty-five feet, as long as it's protecting the view sheds from booth park and other property owners.
Anyway, although if you go up sixty-five feet, that might block their view. I don't know what country they have.
One final question, or final vision. Every one of these properties has a small portion of the property, that's what it means. If you look at the, if you look at the legend over here, they all have a small portion, sometimes twenty-seven percent or whatever. So they all have, at least an acre, right, a little bit of acre, it's going to have a portion of that. I think that there should be some common insistence that these, because they also make a comment about how they will minimize in-field where it's possible. Just, I'm going to support that, we'll try to lay out there and, we look upon some of our. But I, I think we should, I think we should reserve it, because not only is there private equipment installed there, but they also.
Well, and just to add, if there are wetlands on the property, and the conservation administrator determines that it's a regulated area, they don't have a choice. Whether we tell them they should go or not, they have to go. And that's determined by, by the conservation administrator and the Wetlands Commission.
Did you have any other recommendations that we have to include? Coastal resiliency?
Coastal resiliency, but that, would there have to be some sort of recognition that if there's going to be any development, they have to be required to?
Well, we would have to develop the resiliency definitions, regulations, requirements. We don't have those yet. I mean, we've got what we'd like to do, but we're not, we're not ready to, to get, to marry what we want to do with the building code, get the building department on board, make them, make it an official policy within the town zoning regulations, or in some other waterfront, some waterfront construction regulations. They're just not there. Those take time to develop. But, I think you bring up a good point, and if you had my staff comments, you would, you would see that I do mention that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, who holds the town's stormwater permit, is also active in the CRS program and coastal resiliency initiative here in town. They've been sent the text amendment, they've been sent the zone change, and they are the authority to, to give recommendations of impacts on coastal resources here in town. And we hope that they're going to give us something that, that would speak to that. But until, until we are able to get those, you know, forty new definitions added to the zoning regulations, there's nothing for us to require that would have any bite in it, unfortunately. But we're working towards it.
Question, what about traffic and traffic studies? Is that something that could be required? I noticed in the 2007 plan, they were concerned about higher traffic levels in, in the area. Is that something that we could add as a stipulation, or maybe you said that?
No, no, I didn't. But the zoning commission always has the right to require a traffic study if they so choose.
Is that something we can recommend to them, though?
Sure.
Because I know they do have that turn, but if this is a hotel or an other ancillary buildings, I don't know if that's going to be enough, because when Sikorski lets out, that area is such a bad traffic area to begin with. Yeah, they are. And I, I'm sure that will help, but it's still not going to change, I don't know how many employees they have, you know? And, and most of them do when they come out, they go back on to the merit. They really do, in watching them, but I would be concerned about traffic.
Do we want to, do we want to add the caveat to that comment that dependent upon the proposed uses, since we don't know exactly what's coming through, I mean, they could propose, I don't even know, I'm trying to think of something that doesn't have a lot of parking. Self-storage facility.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Do we want to say, recommend that a traffic study be done if proposed uses raise any concerns? Or just blanket, consider to have a traffic study done? I'll leave it all to you.
Everybody okay with that? Can we get that way?
If the uses propose, pose a concern?
You want it to be mandatory?
I think it should be mandatory, because right now, it would just take us ten years to get Sikorski, get Booth, get that area. If you define, we want that very few group. Now we're going to do a new major development, half a mile from there. So, if we don't know in advance, we could end up recreating the problem in just two years to solve. I think that it should, you require, it should be post, which would like post Sikorski traffic improvements in some way, that we should know, lower the traffic problems and the traffic delays, if that can benefit the community. How is this going to be impacted?
Jim?
I agree with you. I think that's the problem, it's the biggest thing to me to know. I agree with you, we're paying the right direction, so let's.
Is that okay, Mr. Staley?
Well, it is, but it still depends. I mean, it could starve us, and if you're other things, you know. A hotel, that's a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but a bowling alley might. And, and that's allowed, so. You know, so maybe instead, just make it required, yeah. I think that's a safer way to go. Just a small aside while we're here, in, in letter Q of the fifteen point eight, it says that we can have a brewery with manufacturer's permit for beer and/or a brewery with brew pub permit, permitting the sale of packaged beer for off-premise consumption, as well as sale of beer for consumption of brewery premise, on brewery premise. I, I thought the state law still doesn't allow the sale of packaged beer over a certain amount. And I think it's a case.
Yeah, that's some, I don't know. And that's Department of Consumer Protection, that would regulate that.
Okay, so we, we don't have to be concerned about that. All right. I, I just want, because I think they are trying to change that. Could it also say a brewery, not a, I don't know if it's called a brewery, but something that distilled spirits? I think that's one of the latest trends, where they make vodka and scotch and infused. Is that what it is? Is that something, would it matter?
I think that'd be a great, a great idea. Unfortunately, they would have to create a, we would have to create a new distillers, I think, permit. To be honest with you, I really don't know. I don't know if a manufacturer's permit for beer and or, no, I don't think they're the same, just by the way that it reads. And I know we've taken that directly from the Department of Consumer Protection. We, they may have to add a distillers permit, what's a R, distillers permit, that allows to do X, Y, and Z. But I think that's a good idea, actually.
Can we recommend that? At least it broadens it, it doesn't limit it. This would limit it. I would think they'd have to come back for an. I would think they'd have to come back for an amendment change.
Yes.
So let's add, unless people have a problem with adding the infusion distillery as an R, letter R. Mr. Vigliati, are you okay with the height restriction?
Well, it's... It's very bad now. It's reported after that is fully implemented for all hotels. So if there's a... I guess that all hotels should be sixty-five. So they've got a product whole business. And the... Space are very different places, so... So it seems like there's a very narrow definition or a narrow view for the sixty-five-foot height, so I'm okay with that.
And just in response to your comment, Commissioner Vigliati, in regards to the height, I did, I wrote, "The commission may choose to inquire that how adding the hotel use would comply with the special case criteria," which talks about being in harmony with the context of the surrounding neighborhood, would comply with those criteria and objectives.
I mean, there's not going to be a conflict if it's public access. I mean, I feel like if it's a hotel, at least they're going to have private people. To me, it seems like that's the use that most jeopardizes public access.
And I would say that would be dependent upon where it's located. You know, if there's restaurants and nightlife options potentially there, I don't know, but I'm not a developer, but I know where I like to go and sit and have a drink after a long hard day's work and have some food, and it's on the water and it's not looking at the back of a hotel. You know, so I would hope that some of those more activated uses would take advantage of their waterfront, but, you know, until we see a development, I don't know.
So you're okay with that? Okay. Any other comments, additions? Are we good with a favorable recommendation?
We have notes.
With the notes?
With the notes.
With my, you've touched on all the recommendations that I've made.
You've got that?
Yeah. So I vote we accept this as the one to fill in with the recommendations included here.
Favorable recommendations. With a favor.
With a favorable.
Mister Staley. Executed by Mister Staley. Any other discussions, questions? Otherwise, carry none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carry none passes unanimously with those changes.
I have to ask, those changes to CNCs, what part of some change did we have to vote?
Those were voted as both. At least that was what I was assuming was happening.
That sounds good to me. Moving right along, hopefully we can get through this.
I apologize, that should have taken half the time if you had my staff comments. It's frustrating.
Okay. Informal referrals, a parking policy review. We've had discussions on it, but due to the lateness of the hour, unless anyone really wants to take it up, it'll always be on the agenda, so we can take it up next time. That's okay with everybody? Is that okay?
That's perfect with me.
Campsite plan review?
No camp applications, no.
Eight-twenty-four review?
No.
Discussion of town plan of conservation and development?
There was a question as to when the future land use plan was adopted, and it was adopted on my birthday, December nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. I was turning twenty-one. Now I wish.
Saying it.
December nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen was when it was adopted, and it's good to know those dates, so.
Is there any other items on the P O C D? Moving right along. Discussion of section five-point-three of the zoning regulations. Mr. Bansky has supplied us with the twenty-eighteen housing data profile. I don't know about you, but I haven't had much time to really look at it, but if anybody has any questions, otherwise, we could bring it up next month.
And I'll just add that the housing data profile is just, it's good for planning commissioners to have this, you know, macro concept of housing in town and how things are currently here in Stratford. So it doesn't require anything. This was really just for informational purposes for you folks.
A little homework for us to do, to go through. Looked at it a little bit and looked good. Erosion and sediment control plan?
Nothing new.
Okay. Bond release request?
Nothing new.
Implementation plans. Greenway project. We did have a meeting with Linda Peppin of the Greenway Committee, and we are working on finding out if some of the people who are currently on the Greenway Committee would like to come back. I haven't heard back from her yet. And we do have an applicant, a Mr. Michael Masisco, who lives on Nichols Avenue and also owns Tony's Bike Shop in Milford. And I think we'll, we may have some others if...
Yeah, please. Joe Bensky would like to stay on?
Good. I'm sure Linda is calling him, so we'll make sure that she knows that. But we're in the process of putting that together, so if anybody has any recommendations of individuals, please have them fill out a, it's called a boards, commissions, agency, and authorities appointment application, and it's on the website. I think you're already on the Greenway.
I've got a question. Does the town put out press releases or anything like that when they're looking for folks to join these? Because I've never, I don't even know where this form is. Is there a way, is there plans to advertise or market that we're looking for folks, or? I just don't know how that works.
If we like to, I think there is a way. I know for our department, we just send in news releases.
Right. Or I'd be happy to send something, if someone wanted to write something up, I could send it to Stratford Star.
Is that what?
If people are interested, they can contact me outside of this.
We can do that in our, whatever you want, in our, in our, in Facebook.
Good.
Those people who write most, I think we'll chat about that.
Yeah. Hopefully Linda Peppin will get back to us shortly, and we'll see how many openings we have, and then we can start filling them with people. Yeah, I know we're going to have a few because some people aren't with us anymore, so. Complete Streets, unless there's anything else on the Greenway project. Okay, Complete Streets?
I am currently in the process of writing the RFQ for the engineer design for the pilot project for Stratford Center. It's going to be following the QBS bid process, which allows us to deal with some of the possible uncertainty of funding in the future. It allows us to access federal money in addition to the state money that we're currently eligible for under what the OPM grant requires, so it's at least allowing us to cast a wider net for implementation of these projects. Hopefully, we've got the, we're hoping to have the RFQ done this week, and bid packages to be out in the next three weeks. That would be the goal. Once that's done, you know, there's usually about a one-month selection process, and I would certainly like to open up the, if we have any available spots on the selection team, someone from the Greenway Committee, you know, potentially Harold, Commissioner Watson, I know you've been involved all the way along with the Greenway and the Complete Streets, and thought that you might be a nice addition to the selection committee if you were so interested, or another, if there's another recommendation, we would love to have that person sit on the selection committee. So that's where we're sitting with that, if anyone has any questions. Not to put you on the spot there, Commissioner Watson.
I have a second.
Good. I think that was, who is, the Complete Streets Committee is part of the committee to decide, right?
Well...
Is there more than that?
There's a, there's just the selection committee currently. The selection committee is basically one or two stakeholders, you know, people that are active in the bicycling community, and then our technical folks, engineer, regional planner, myself. It hasn't been, we, a lot of those, sometimes they're actually required through the grant who you have to select. But we know that we're able to have someone from the community, so that's why we, I'm extending it to Commissioner Watson.
Good.
And then, once that goes on, I will be selecting a community advisory committee that basically reviews all deliverables for this project as it goes forward.
And the timetable again is?
Well, we hope to finish the RFQ this week, and then in the next three weeks, depending on bid cycles and purchasing, we hope to have it out in the next three weeks out into the public.
And how long will they have to respond?
Minimum of thirty days. I think QBS may actually have it for forty days because it opens it up to the state and federal list of certified or pre-approved vendors, so it has to be out for a bit longer.
Okay. And the selection committee will make a recommendation to the town council?
No.
Just they'll make a selection?
They make the selection.
And then you go into contract negotiations?
Correct.
Okay. Does that contract have to be approved by the council?
Did the receipt, no. The receipt of the money is already, has already, that's what needs to be approved by the council. I don't believe it's actually the contract, but if it is, then we'll do it. But I don't know.
Okay. And this...
Maybe I'm wrong. I think we're only analyzing the acceptance of the streets.
Not the vendors, though. The accepting of the money, we did. But to be honest, I don't know. You know, we'd have to find that out. If it does have to go to town council, then we would certainly send it there.
Okay. Any questions on Complete Streets? Anybody? Nope. Okay. Coastal resiliency plan, anything on that?
Not much. We're still waiting to get through our final phase here of CRS until we get to the final acceptance phase, and we are starting to put together our coastal resiliency team, which is basically department heads with relevant experience, who will basically have to go to lots of resiliency meetings.
Sounds like fun.
Stay out of the way. I don't want to get picked for that one.
Any questions?
And that's where that sits. I'm sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Bansky on that? Okay. Other items? Mr. Watson?
Are we on for our meetings in May, two days? Is everything still...
The land use?
Oh, yes. We are, and I'm looking at my calendar right now, I'm sorry. Let's see, I believe it's the tenth of May. Yes, we've got the tenth of May, which the tenth is basic legal issues we'll be discussing, and that's at three-seventy Beach Road in Fairfield, and that's only for folks that have registered. If you haven't registered, it's closed now, and unfortunately, we can't take any more folks because they are at capacity. And then the twenty-first is the next event, and that is same location, same time, same location. That is regarding plan reading.
I don't know if anybody's interested, but I have a few individuals from Circa who should be on, on basically the resiliency issues, on doing, programming, with seminars and everything else. It's a trial and...
And we were lucky enough to have someone from Circa here, from UConn, who spoke to us about some of the regulatory hurdles that we might be facing.
Right. Okay. Any other items or member comments, concerns? Just so you know, I did speak with David Wright, who is the IT person for the town about our speakers, our microphones here, and he's added it to his list, laundry list, before he sees the contractor on the...